It is, uh, six thirty-three. We'll call a meeting to order. We do anything, we have a change in agenda. We have to add loan documents and budget transfers. Do we do that under action items?
I think you have to ask the board if it's so moved.
Yeah, we'll ask, that's, we're asking them for, so move second. Second by Fran. All those in, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay. Do we have any citizens comments this evening? Presentation.
So I'm gonna turn over a second to our sixth grade teachers, but we had, as you guys know, I talked about last month, I believe, our sixth graders went to nature's classroom for the second year. We skipped a year last year, even before they went. So I asked the sixth grade teachers and if they could get a little presentation together and grab a couple of the kiddos that went and explain the trip and tell them what a great time they had. So I'm gonna turn over to Tom Sanglare, he's a sixth grade teacher, and Karen Aiken, she's another sixth grade teacher, and they can kind of run down what happened and you guys can see the trip.
Alright, so we brought three of our students with us today who went on the trip. It's a week-long field trip centered around nature, science, mathematics is mixed in as well. And we thought the best way to present it is to actually have the students who experienced it to present a slideshow with pictures and information about what went on. So, if the three students want to come up. You can introduce yourself.
I'm Brandon.
I'm Russell.
And I'm Kayden. And so we just caution, caution. Mealtime was very opportunities. Meals were eaten in a grand style. Each table had a sign of which one for each meal. It was the which ones responsibility to set and clear the table for that meal. Students were guided as portion sizes allowed, but they were also welcome to seconds and or thirds. At the end of every meal, all eaten food was scrapped into a bucket and weighed. The total, the total weight of the wasted food was given in the report. Our challenge was to bring down the waste.
On the, on their first night, students participated in a science fair. Nature's classroom's teachers, uh, had set up a variety of science investigations that students were able to cycle through. They learned about creating a vacuum, the amount influenced of different metals, and how gases react in a confined, in confined spaces, just to name a few.
Class time. Students were able, students were able to choose from a variety of classes from shelter, building, to dissection. During the sides dissection, students cut apart the eyeballs of cows and sheep. They learned the parts of an eye and what they do. It's all the names of the tools uses such as scalpels and scissors. Class of students. Some students had a chance at this dissected shark. Tailor the nature's classroom instructor taught them about how the shark lived and how its body was adapted to its environment. They learned that, they learned about how many babies a shark could have and found six babies inside their shark.
Beaver fever. In another of the class time choices, students learned how beavers bodies uniquely adapted to enable it to thrive in its environment. They learned which kind of trees beavers prefer to gnaw on and how they build their dams and lakes. At the end of this lesson, students had a relay race in which they had to put on gear that simulated beaver body parts, raced down the course and then, and handed the gear to the next student.
Exploring the great outdoors. Students spent most of their time outdoors, rain or shine, learning about their environment and how to care for it. They hiked mountainsides, explored streams, and saw its spectacular views. Along the way, they played games and learned. These hikes were also helped them develop a great team. Taking in the details, on their hikes, students often stopped to take a closer look at some of the tinier forest creatures, such as those making their homes in this decomposing log. This particular log had been there a long time and was very fragile. Students were very careful not to disturb this delicate ecosystem.
Hardcore parkour. Students challenged themselves physically in other activities besides hiking. One instructor led a group of students through some hardcore parkour training. In addition to practicing vaults and rolls, students built self-confidence and learned the importance of using good judgment and motivating others.
Simulations. Some of the activities involved the whole camp rather than small groups. Here's one of our students helped model a food chain before going outside to engage in a predator, meat prey simulation in fields. Other whole camp simulations including traveling on the Oregon Trail and one called On The Streets, which helped students understand the challenges faced by the poor and homeless. All activities were followed by discussion to help students process the new learning.
Break time. Students had breaks built into their day to give them a chance to relax, rejuvenate, and repair them to gear for the next adventure. Those breaks could spend engaging in some of the other opportunities provided by the camp, which is kickball, tennis, shovelboard, and basketball. But after a long morning of hiking up a mountain, some just needed to cool their feet in a beautiful pool lake, pool language.
Building a positive community. Part of the philosophy at nature's classroom includes building teamwork and a positive attitude. I-LAC can stand for I in loving and caring, or I always love a challenge. The I-LAC board was a place where students were encouraged to leave notes commending classmates for their helpfulness, kindness, respect, or responsibility.
End of the day. The hours after dinner were also filled with adventures. But at the, uh, but at the evening's end, it was time to settle down. Everyone would gather together for a wrap-up of the night's lessons. And then it was time for quiet sing. Out came the guitars, ukuleles, and harmonicas, and students and teachers would sing together before making their way back to their rooms for a good night's sleep.
Last night, that's the, that's these. On their last night together, students and their field group leaders performed skits I had secretly been working on. All throughout the week, teachers had watched students step out of their comfort zones and challenge themselves in many variety of ways. For some, this performance before the whole camp was another challenge to be met, and they did it with the humor and enthusiasm to our great enjoyment.
This pretty much says it all. It was a, it was a week full of adventure, exploration, teamwork, hands-on learning, challenging, confidence building. It was exhausting, but it was awesome.
Thank you.
And I have something to present. Thank you for helping us all pay for the trip. This is a thank you card.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions? Did you, did, this is to teachers, did they get good feedback or negative feedback from the students at the, at the?
All positive feedback.
All positive feedback?
This one would've stayed.
I'll ask each one of you, what was the coolest thing you learned?
Coolest thing I learned probably was that if you really are, like, there's people that you think you don't like, uh, once you get to know them, you start to like them, and you don't always need electronics, 'cause if you're out in the nature and stuff, you can find a few of the things and have a good time.
Nice.
I think the coolest part about my trip was doing the simulations and really see how people back then and now know how hard it is, and I thought it was a great experience.
My favorite experience was the Oregon Trail simulation when, uh, how, on how accurate it was, and how we actually got to hunt animals and had to ration out to our family members in our wagon, and we had to travel over two miles for the entire length of the simulation.
Thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Yes. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Ed, can I say something? So I had the opportunity to go for a couple, a couple days, and I gotta tell you, the staff there, they're part, they're part comedians, they're part teachers, excellent teachers, they're part musicians, uh, part entertainers, and they did it all, and they did a wonderful job with our students. I saw them firsthand, teaching with the students, playing with them, um, helping them out during the, during the meals. The last night, when we had the, the skit night, when they had to put all the skits together, was just hilarious, and, and their entertainment came through, and the kids had a great time. I don't think I've laughed that hard in a long time, it was pretty funny. But I got there, I got there at the end of the week, and the kids were telling me how much fun they'd had just the first three days and how much they're enjoying it. So they, they really appreciated that. I wanna thank you as the principal for helping make that happen.
I'm glad everybody enjoyed it. I think it was probably a very experience that you'll remember for quite a while. Thank you, guys. Thank you guys.
Thank you. That was great.
Ventilation project, oh, we should do that. Hey, let's do the ventilation project update, how, what we're at?
I think we'll probably tag team with Jeff.
Okay.
Um, we do have plans and specs that are out on the street now. John Penny had, I think, a list of either five or six contractors that he was reaching out to, um, to solicit interest. We also put an ad in the banner, um, that's running this week, I believe, for, um, for the project. There was mandatory walkthrough on Monday that I was not able to attend, but Jeff was here, so he can speak to that. But I do know that, unfortunately, only two contractors were in attendance, um, both of whom are local contractors, Beddington Cooling and Heating and Hayden Cooling. They also had the, Control Tech was here, but they won't be bidding separately, it would be, um, a subcontract to the, to the mechanical contract. Through that, it came out that they need a little bit more time to bid it. John Penny was anticipating or hoping that we would have bids back this Friday, and it was just too much time. They said that they needed more time, and I think they wanna come back and do a little bit more exploration, um, on site to help them put their bids together. But I believe both are busy this summer, um, so we, we'll just have to wait and see where the bids come in. Because they're not hungry for the work, we might see an uptick in what they're actually pricing it out at, but, um, that is complete speculation at this point. Just knowing that they're busy, that tends to be, um, the way that pricing goes.
Yeah, I see where Arlington also had a bid out for ventilation projects.
So Jeff, I don't know if there's anything that...
You, you took out my steam.
Sorry.
No, the walk, the walkthrough went well, as far as they, um, they kinda looked at the project, um, the major part being the ventilation duct work on this end here. They just wanted to have another day. I think they might come tomorrow, when we have our field day, when the school's kinda empty, and look at that work, because ceiling coming down, it might be a little more work than anticipated, so they wanna get a subcontractor in here and see if that might detail, because there's our drop ceiling, and then there's the old seal, some parts of the old ceiling that are still there that probably need to be removed. So, and they, they also looked at doing some additional work off the gym area, with one of the, um, some of the duct work out there for the ventilation, so that was added to the, uh, what's that called, the addendum?
The addendum.
The addendum added to the project as well. So, um, like Renee said, that's, they've all said, you know, we're busy right now, we'll look into it, and if we feel like we can do it, we'll put a bid in, but it is, everybody's pretty busy this time of year, according to them.
So those were the only two, they showed up, anybody else getting bikes for it?
One, one person, two other contracts got back to him. One contractor said that he was already, his workload was already full, another contractor said they couldn't make the walkthrough due to a prior commitment.
So do we have a date by which we're now asking the two who did attend to?
Next Thursday. Thursday is the, uh, due date for the bids.
Thursday, okay. This will be from tomorrow?
Correct.
And the drawings are done? John has the drawings done?
Oh, yeah.
So therefore, we should have a meeting. If we get the bids in, we should get the, the meeting right after.
Hopefully, we will get bids.
Yep.
So we'll wait and see what we get, and then, you know, hopefully there are two that we can review. But in the event that there are none, we still have drawings and specs that we could then put out again, um, perhaps in the winter, you know, we just don't have anybody to, to do the work for us this summer. No, that's not, um, the board's wish, that you guys would like to get it done this summer, but if we just don't have, you know, the manpower, the interest from the contractors to do it, at least that money has been designated, it'll be set aside, and we can use it in the future if needed.
Anybody else got any questions?
Is that, is that date flex, um, flexible for the walkthrough? If there was a contractor that couldn't be, or is there another time they could come?
I think, John, why don't we let you?
John made it a mandatory walkthrough.
On a certain day?
Yes, and it was, so people were aware of that, and usually, if it's a mandatory walkthrough, um, contractors, if they really want to bid it, make arrangements to make sure that they can get here. Occasionally, they will, um, whoever is running the project, so John Penny in this case, would make exceptions to that, but the way that we advertised it and the way that the specs were put together, it really was mandatory because of the tight time, timeframe that they were looking to get a bid.
And is the end date for the bids next Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday, okay. The twenty-second.
Three o'clock, Jeff's office.
Oh, it is?
They're coming here.
Let me write that down.
Okay.
It's not necessarily a bid, it's a bid opening, it's just the bids need to be here by then.
It's opening next Thursday. Three, three PM, Jeff's office. Anybody got any other questions for Renee or Jeff?
So you wrote that down. Ed, are you planning to be there?
I plan on it.
Okay. They can, bids can be opened without a board member there, or how does that?
Yeah.
Okay. So then, uh, what will happen, what do we wanna do after that? Just plan, Ed, so we're not...
We'll have to have a meeting to accept a bid. I mean, we're dependent, it'll all depend, and if we get the bids, then I'll call a special meeting very quickly after that, talking to the, talking to the contractors, when they can, you know, when they, when, you know, if we get one bid, two bids, or whatever. And then, uh, that's, that's my plan anyways. Anybody else got any ideas?
Can that be planned on the same day?
Same time.
At four o'clock?
Four thirty, if you want it. You need to warn a special meeting, twenty-four hours.
I can, I can, I can warn a, warn a meeting for, on Wednesday or Tuesday for Thursday. Yeah, do that. That's fine. And then you can always cancel it.
Right.
So what you should do?
If some of you are coming to the opening anyway, then you would be here in...
So why don't we, why don't we figure that, that we'll have a, we'll have a meeting set aside for next Thursday at three o'clock? Or four o'clock?
Could probably do three, fifteen.
Two thirty.
Yeah. It won't take too long. It's gonna take them.
I won't, I won't be in town for that, but...
As long as we have a sit-in. As long as we have three there, I'll be there. Fran?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Yeah, I'm, be questionable.
Okay. Jeff will be there. Yep.
It could even be a little later, couldn't it?
Yeah, it could be later in the same day. We could do that.
That helps you, Dave.
If you wanna, if you think you can make it later, I could call for it later in the day.
Yeah, okay. Uh, yeah, I'm just trying to think about that particular day. If I've got anything, like five would be better anyway.
Yeah, for me, it's worse. Five, later is worse.
Oh, it's worse.
Yeah, we're right in out of town before.
Oh, okay.
So if I pick...
But then there's no perfect time.
About four thirty.
So what? I mean, I can do either way. I mean, whatever works.
Well, I do have a speakerphone in my office as well, so somebody could call, at least one person could call in.
Yeah, yeah. Why don't we stick with four? I may be able to make it. Now I could call in.
Four, I would, yeah.
Four's all right. You're in town.
I'm in town. Fran and I are pretty flexible. And then so? Yeah. Flexible with our time, not the other way. Okay. So we'll, we'll do it that way then. And we'll, uh, call the meeting for four o'clock at, next Thursday. Anybody got anything else? Uh?
Uh, I'm happy to be here tonight. The superintendent had a change of plans, so, um, thank you for allowing me to be here with you. Uh, I don't have a big report for you, but we did meet with the Act Forty-Six Committee last night, maybe, maybe Jeff even wants to speak to that, there was, there was some decisions made, and, um, you could, you could share that.
Yeah, um, Act Forty-Six met last night. We decided to hire Dan French as our consultant. Right now, they're using just the red money, which is about eight thousand dollars left from the red study a couple years ago. We weren't given money from the state, you know, with the key to apply for the twenty thousand dollars, um, it's just too far past the deadline for that. It's a pretty tight timeframe to get incentives. They pushed it out to October, or November, in November, and by December twenty-sixth, we had to make a decision of where we're to stand. So Dan has a plan in his head, um, he outlined it pretty thoroughly, so I kinda, you know, if you ever met Dan French, you know, he's a pretty structured individual, so my guess is he already has it figured out how to make all the deadlines, if the committee can work with him. North Bennington is still, you know, sitting on the sideline, um, that's kind of where we stand. You know, otherwise, there's, you know, Donna Russo Savage came down and presented Act Forty-Six, laid out all the options. If you can watch on CAT TV, you know, she did a pretty good job tying the whole thing together after all her presentations. She made it pretty specific, I thought, for, you know, our area.
For, for here.
For here. Um, so, you know, she laid out all the different options of what would work theoretically.
Anybody from North Bennington attend?
Um...
Bruce Layman was there.
Ray was there.
Ray was in the audience.
Oh, okay.
Bruce is now in, it's in...
He's Bennington.
Bennington, so he's now on the North Bennington Committee. I didn't see anybody else there. They might have some...
As long as Ray...
Some audience members.
Somebody there.
Yeah, they sat there as audience members.
Listen to what was said, yeah, okay.
Those, uh, presentations will be available on the SVSU website. And the dates were a little bit different, that, uh...
Yes.
To submit, to actually get the incentives, it would have to be approved by November thirtieth.
Yes.
Which backs it up to, it would have to be presented to the...
State by...
To the state by early October, and so our plan would really have to be finished by the end of September. So you can hear how that's kind of creeping back in terms of, um, writing the plan and meeting the recommendations, and, um, also with getting community input on what the plan finally...
You know, incentives, they were pushed back a couple months, the deadlines were pushed back six months, so...
Yes, it was July first.
You know, it was July first. And so, you know, I guess we can always ask the, our legislator, people in the area, if they can push it back another couple months.
They did that through legislation.
Yes.
It wasn't just to choose a date.
No, I mean, we could ask them again.
And then the, the December twenty-sixth is actually to, uh, if, if we wanted to submit a plan that was our own SVSU alternative plan to, to sketch out how, how we can see it meeting the five goals of Act Forty-Six and, and what advantages that would have for all of our districts, that would have to be written and submitted by December twenty-sixth. That is the end date. And after that, we're done. Then it's up to the state.
And we might not make the incentives, you know, Dan was pretty, I mean, his aggressive schedule to make the incentives, you know, the question is, the committee can work that fast to get to the incentives? Which the incentives are only a short term too, so they disappear for, you get tax rate for a couple years, then it comes back to your regular tax rates.
I would say though, in just a positive note, that a lot of the work that he was discussing at the meeting has already been done.
Yes.
And we have worked through all those steps, it felt a little bit like deja vu when he was saying things that need to be done. So I think if he even goes back, 'cause he's new to what we have accomplished, and so are many of the Act Forty-Six Committee, so I think that if they go back, and Richard will know, that most of those things have been done already. The committee was really up to the point of developing articles of agreement, they had it all laid out, you know? Some of the details that take deeper discussion, like board makeup and...
Financials.
Voting and the finances and, and, uh, some of those things will, will take some, um, deep discussion, but, but much of the work and the writing of it has been done. So, that, could stay hopeful about the meeting that day.
Next meeting?
Next meeting is Thursday, the twenty, I left my phone at home, the twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
Six?
I think it is.
Six to twenty-ninth, the Thursday. Six PM.
Okay. Where's that, where's that meeting gonna be? Central?
They have been at the CDC.
They've been at the CDC, they're hoping again at the CDC.
Okay.
That is correct, six twenty-nine at six PM.
They're gonna check, they just had to check on that room before they warn it.
Six twenty-nine, six PM.
Six twenty-nine, six PM.
Okay. Anything else now?
Nope, I'll press it in.
Okay. Uh, then we'll go to our action, action items. Treasurer's report. I'll move lunch, just motion for it by Fran, second?
Uh, second.
Second. Discussion. No discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry. Okay. Consent agenda? I'll move it. Second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Uh, minutes of, minutes of May tenth and May fifteenth.
And May fifteenth, amended to read that the meeting started at ten thirty-six AM, not PM.
Yeah, ten thirty-six AM, not PM. 'Cause I'd be asleep by then.
I wouldn't have been there.
Any, any discussion? I have one question on the warrants. Yep. Uh, number two thousand thirteen, it's the homeless transportation, goes from page one onto page two, it's eighty-two hundred, almost eighty-three hundred dollars. How many students is that? Probably don't know at this point.
Two.
Oh, okay.
It's, um, two, I think, six students.
Six students, and I, and I realize there's, uh, one there from February, I, I don't know why they wait so long to, to put that through, but, um, wow, six students, so eighty to eighty-three hundred dollars, okay. That's all I wanted to know.
It's, uh, it's mandatory, Fran, we, we really don't have a choice about that.
Right, no, I, I knew that, and I, I just wanted, I mainly wanted to know how many it was, because it was just, is that just locally around here, or is that to Massachusetts or anything?
I think at this point, it's, uh, it's within our towns, yes.
Our district, okay, okay. All right, thanks.
But I'm not absolutely sure.
Okay, I just wanna, I wanna, Jeff, Jeff asked last month about a roofing bill. It was an old roofing bill before we got the roof, actually redone or repaired, that Doxy actually sent to the wrong school. We kind of were late. School didn't want to pay it for us, so, so it was an old, it was an old...
Okay. Since we already did Act Forty-Six, that's been paid.
It wasn't in our district, it was a different stadium.
Okay, so, make a motion on the consent agenda, we have a motion, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Propose? Carry. Okay. Now, we have been asked to, about loan documents. What's, that is...
Yes, um, your treasurer, I, I got a call today from, um, People's United Bank, and just because of, you know, this time of the year, everybody's trying to get their borrowing in place for next year, and the banks are very busy. They were hoping to have, um, these to us sooner, but of course, their legal counsel has to review them before they distribute them to us, and we got them today. Melanie has signed them. In order for, um, the board to execute them, they would need a motion to waive the reading of the articles. And what it is, is a five hundred thousand dollar line of credit, which will basically sustain the school district through the time before, um, property taxes are turned over to the district and then, um, back in the black for the remainder of the school.
And to, second.
I have three little spots marked on here where the board members need to sign.
Okay. That took care of the budget transfers, also?
Uh, budget transfer, no. Um, in the, excuse me, um, in the board packet with your budget stat report, you probably saw a couple of overspent line items, so my office went ahead and took a look at where we could, um, pull some money from. So what we have here is kind of the ins and outs of, um, what we needed to cover, so, um, looking at the first two lines, um, looking at those together, so seventy-five dollars, we're looking to move seventy-five from the excess that we have in our fuel oil line, which is presently a little over twenty-five thousand dollars, move seventy-five dollars of that into a contracted service, attendance service line, and what this is for, um, some residency investigations, um, that we've had Vic Maloney working on, um, with regard to Shaftesbury students and making sure that they're actually living in Shaftesbury. Um, the next two, um, actually, the next three, so a hundred and twenty-five dollars coming from legal, legal services, uh, for the Board of Ed, to cover shortages on contracted services, Board of Ed, and that covers, um, the minutes, so our secretary, and also, um, covering the, uh, cost of our election workers at polls. So a hundred and twenty-five dollars between the two of those lines will cover those overages, and then we still will have May and June bills coming in for homeless transportation, um, so that should definitely cover it, but again, coming out of fuel oil, which, um, again, is over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Just, just a quick question on homeless transportation, did we under budget that? You know, it seems like there's a big jump compared to what we expected.
You never, never know.
Yeah, I know, we never know, but.
This is the most type in here.
Okay.
I, since, I mean, I've done a little research, just because the, the state was actually looking at different options that we might be able to utilize for services such as this, so, and looking back, um, there are some years when districts don't have any.
Yep.
And then there's some years when there are pretty significant amounts, so it's just.
So this, the seven thousand will cover through the balance, the end of the year?
Correct.
And, and the other, other lines, what we're going to fund into, will that be, this will be enough to cover us through the end of the year?
Yeah, we, we don't foresee.
We can do this again next month, but.
Yeah, um, the, uh, the dues and fees were, um, the V S B A dues, just, I think both of those accounts, and those lines were overspent by, you know, maybe, well, maybe forty dollars, so it's not.
Okay. We need a motion to accept.
Move the transfers?
This is for the transfer.
Yeah. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Covered. Okay. While we're there, could we have a motion to approve authorization of the chair or vice chair to sign the warrant, your contract, soon as the summer season?
Go.
We have a movement.
A second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Covered. Okay. While we're there, could we have a motion to approve authorization of the chair or vice chair to sign the warrant, your contract, soon as the summer season?
Go.
We have a movement.
A second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Covered. Okay. While we're there, could we have a motion to approve authorization of the chair or vice chair to sign the warrant, your contract, soon as the summer season?
Go.
We have a movement.
A second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Covered. Okay, that passes. Okay, so that takes care of that. Takes care of that. Okay, policies. Let's take, uh, fixed asset policy, you got any comments on that, Scott?
No, it was, they were, they were pretty straightforward. Renee went through.
Pretty boring.
They were.
Yeah, it was pretty boring.
Essentially a reduction of accounting terms.
Yeah. There was, there was a lot of pages about, with a lot of scratches off, and get rid of it.
This is what you need to know.
I would say that these, and I think all of them, yes, were in response to a, um, a monitoring visit we had for, from the Agency of Education for use of mostly federal funds, but, um, so they, uh, these are pretty mandated policies that we were asked to put on a policy menu, so that's what, that's why they are all coming together.
Okay, why don't we just take them, if nobody has any questions, we can take them all together?
Yep.
Have a motion?
I make the motion. To take them all together?
Yep.
Second.
Second by Scott. Any discuss, more discussion?
It's, I just say what they are, the, the first one, then the second one, and the third one.
The policy three one one five, four one two one, and one one oh oh zero zero.
Um, just a quick one for the travel reimbursement, can anybody go look on the, uh, administrative regulation to find what the reimbursement rates are? I mean, is that known?
Well, for mileage, it's set by the federal.
Yeah, it's mileage set by the federal, but they said this, uh, meals would be reimbursed, reimbursed based on actual itemized receipt, which makes sense, uh, MAC's been established by administrative regulation, I mean, is on the SVSU website?
Uh, I don't, I don't know if we've written the regs yet, we have some standard procedures right now, um, we wouldn't put a set price in there because it is always changing, all of those things are always changing.
In the policy, we wouldn't, but.
No, we wouldn't put it in the regs either, because it changes all the time, like the federal rate changes frequently, and.
Yeah. What about meals, though? How?
We have a, a, a ceiling, it's like thirty-nine dollars a day at this point.
Okay. For everything?
For meals.
For meals.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. But there's, there's no, like, for, for lodging and anything else, you couldn't put a maximum on it? Not to exceed such and such?
Really depends on where folks are going, so I mean, if it's a conference in Bennington, or, you know, not that anybody would be staying here, but versus Boston, versus, you know, other places.
But you, I, yeah, what I was saying is, you may want to put a reg, something in there, cause it says it's going to be established as administrative reg, so you don't want to leave it open.
Right, right, and we, we will address it when we write them.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So you just have to put it in there saying, I would say, not to go over such and such a figure, or something like that.
And I think that's a valid suggestion.
Yeah.
Trump Tower, huh?
I think it's more than that.
Well, especially now that people can search on the internet and find a reasonable place to stay, so that we have to set some level of what is reasonable.
I mean, I think it'd be nice to have a set level, um, just so the taxpayers know.
Mm-hmm.
I mean.
I, I agree with your suggestion.
Yeah, and then it, make it a point that if they go to some certain place that's more expensive, like New York City or someplace like that, you can get a override for it.
It needs approval, that's all, I see them all.
Yeah, uh, well, we trust you, but.
But, well, sometimes I question things.
Some taxpayers question things, too.
I question them, I'll have you know.
Okay, that's all I had on that one.
Okay.
Three hundred dollars a night is not okay.
They go to the place where they leave the light on, just lose the thirty, forty bucks. Okay, facilities, I guess we have, don't have, you got anything on that?
Oh, we had, we had finished.
Oh, we haven't voted on it yet, oh, I didn't do, check that out.
Last was the prevention of conflict of interest.
Right, yeah. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Carry. Okay, nothing in facilities that we have, Jeff?
No, no, actually, I haven't seen facilities.
And nothing in personnel?
No.
Okay, and now we're down to Jeff's report.
So, on May nineteenth, we had a, we had beautiful skies, it was our big truck night, our annual big truck night, which is getting bigger and bigger every year, seemed to turn out as excellent, we made a PTO meeting last week, we made approximately thirty-five hundred dollars on that evening, um, new this year was the dunk booth, that, um, Tom St. Lera, who was here earlier, uh, our P.E. teacher, Mr. Fightfield, and yours truly, were the targets for the evening, that was a big hit, I think it made twice as much as the cost to, to rent it, it was a chilly night, though, I remember that.
It was chilly.
It got chillier as, I was last, last hour, and it got chillier and chillier as the sun went down, but it was, it was all good fun, I guess I had a great time with that, our traditional themed baskets were also a hit, I want to thank Cara Scary and Lisa Loomis for putting them together, they just looked so spectacular, so every classroom does a themed basket, so there was a fishing basket, there was a chocolate basket, there was a, um, home improvement basket, and kids bring in items in the Cara, and Lisa put the baskets together really nicely, they looked great, and people buy raffle tickets, and they put the tickets in the baskets they want to try to win, um, so that was, that was a huge hit. I also want to thank, um, the parent staff and community members that helped that evening, Ed Kane, he ran the penny, penny game for the whole evening, uh, I don't think he knew what he was in for when he came in, but.
But as, as I told you earlier, I thought I was gonna get a chair to sit down, and I never sat down.
I gave him a chair, I need a chair to sit on, Jeff, I gave him a chair, we never used it, um, but we also had a ton of parents and community members come and, and help run games and activities throughout the night, they came together very nicely, I want to thank the PTO for all the prep work, a lot goes into it a couple of months before, getting all the trucks lined up, Amy Brown and her husband do the trucks for us, they call around and getting the trucks here, I think we had seventeen trucks this year, um, trucks from Daleys, State Police, Whitman's, TAM, um, Shaftesbury Fire, Greater Heights Tree Service, K C M Oil, just to name a few, um, the paper did a nice article on it, kind of listed all the trucks that were there, so, it just gets better and better every year, and the weather helps, obviously, so, um, again, I want to thank the PTO for all the work on that, which segues into my next, um, I want to take an opportunity to thank the parent teacher organization for this year, uh, we had a successful year, I think more than my previous three years, um, president CJ Brownow, treasurer Tim White, clerk Amanda Madison, parents Cara Weatherall, Linda Poole, Amy Brown, Dixie Koffer, Jackie Greenslett, and Jennifer Deanna Pharo, and our music teacher Sue Green, our art teacher Emily Umflit, um, worked to have the best year we've had since I've been here, um, we met once a month, making all these plans for all these different events, and I said, Big Truck Night was a huge success, in fact, all of our fundraising we did at the PTO was an activity, were activities that we gave back to the school, like our Family Glow Dance, so people came, they came to the Family Glow Dance, we offered the dance experience and the fun, and they paid us a small fee, we had Silver Graphics, which is where children made an art picture in art class, and then we sent it off to a company, and they put it on anything from coffee mugs to water bottles to magnets to T-shirts to whatever a parent wants, which is a huge hit, um, and so, we did a lot of things like that, holiday shop, the school stores, all fundraising stuff that gave back to the school, wasn't, we were sending home something for parents to buy, which is, um, we get a lot of grief from that when we did that in the past, so, I'm, I'm pretty proud of that, as the principal, our PTO doing that, is not, not having that kind of fundraising, the money we raised this year helped fund, um, the Chris Polios, he came at the end of the year, he's a bike stunt, um, expert world champion, who also did a bully, anti-bullying talk with our kiddos while he was doing bike stunts, they brought the, um, Suku African Drum Troop, if you recall, from the miracle, that was part of the PTO's fundraising as well, they also, uh, give teachers a hundred and twenty-five dollars each, for teacher allocations, to buy supplies or help with field trips, do whatever the teachers may need throughout the, throughout the year that sometimes they can't get with their budgets, and, um, Teacher Appreciation Week, um, they got new speakers for all of the computers that needed new speakers in the, in the school, so teachers could use the, those, those, um, those equipments, and we also got some new instruments for our music program, so kiddos that couldn't necessarily, um, afford to rent a piece of a, um, a music instrument, we got a couple of new instruments for Sue Green and her music program, so I want to thank the PTO again, it was the best year, like I said, since I've been here, very successful, we got a lot done, and, um, we did a lot of it without having to, obviously, sell some, some things that, other things, um, other groups do, and last with the PTO, I want to, um, congratulate the whole community, we are part of the Hannaford Help Schools Program, which is, if you've ever been to Hannaford, they have a, a place where you can put your receipt when you walk out the door, and has all the different schools there, and the school that gets the most receipts, um, gets a, a bonus at the end of the year, and we've won it for the second year in a row, it's a thousand dollar bonus we get from Hannaford Helps, and Tim Cahill presented us with a check last week, and he commended us, because he says, you go up against Mount Anthony Union High School, you go against Housen Falls, of schools that are much bigger, and he says, your community is definitely looking out for you, cause you got the most receipts the last two years, so, thank you to everyone that does that, um, and like I said, it's a testament to the support that we have here. Um, almost done. Uh, tomorrow, the weather looks good again for our annual field day and family barbecue, so, um, Chris Fightfield, our P.E. teachers are working hard getting our field day together, we have a, a big inflatable water slide coming, an obstacle course, and other fun games that go on, uh, again, thanks to the parents that are coming to help out with that, um, it'll be capped off with our sixth grade graduation tomorrow night at seven o'clock, so our, our sixth graders will be, uh, graduating tomorrow and getting ready to move on to the middle school next year, and then finally, not finally, one more thing after this, um, this is my longest report ever.
It's positive, though.
It is, it's, we have a lot of great things going on, um, so as you know, June twenty-third, twenty-second, and twenty-third is teachers' professional learning days at the end of the school year next week, we have, um, a lot of different things happening, we have a student-led parent teacher conference workshop happening on Wednesday, we have crisis intervention happening with Mark Bujo with our teachers, um, helping students in crisis and having some positive interventions around that, um, student data analysis, looking at all our benchmark data from this spring, and, and how we can improve instruction around that data, and what it tells us, and standard-based reporting, so they'll be busy over the last three days getting, um, some professional learning in those areas, and last, I promise it's last, um, if anybody's available on June twenty-fifth, which is a week from this Sunday, the Sage Symphony and the Music Company Orchestra is coming here to Shaftesbury, they're hopefully gonna do it outside, if the weather's nice, they're gonna put on an American Salutes concert, pop's concert, they've done this last couple of years in North Bennington, they're gonna do it this year at Shaftesbury, it's a, uh, it's admissions free, but they're accepting donations, all proceeds will go to Sue Green's music program, in the past, they've gotten up to twenty-five hundred dollars at North Bennington, so, like I said, admission's free, but, um, PTO's gonna be selling treats, if it's a beautiful night, be outside, listen to some nice music, the symphony is very good from what I hear, um, so if anybody's available in, um, a week from Sunday, and, uh, at four P.M.
Four P.M.
Four P.M., yep, um, right, there is, we will be inside the gym if it's raining, so we're gonna have it one way or another, um, so hopefully some of us can make, or some of you can make it, and that's it, I promise.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The only thing I have is, I wanted to thank, uh, Jeff and the teachers and all the aides and everybody else who made the school year, uh, finished off the school year very nicely, and I think the school is doing very well, you can tell by everything that, uh, Jeff is talking about. Okay, can I, yes?
Two quick things.
Yep.
First, I, last month, we were all looking at the, after the meeting ended, at the attendance numbers, which we get included in our packet each month, and, not something that usually pay much attention to, but I was looking at it again this month, and noticed that Shaftesbury did very well, attendance-wise, and in fact, had higher attendance than any other school in the district, with, with, one exception being Woodford, which only has ten students or something.
It's under .
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty-one.
No, you're twenty-one.
No, no disrespect meant to Woodford at all, but congratulations, uh, to the Shasberry students, to their excellent attendance during the month of May. That was the first thing.
And to, to piggyback on that, we actually, I just did the, um, Perfect Attendance Award, I think we had ten students this year had perfect attendance.
That's really something.
I think it was ten.
Wow.
Perfect attendance this year.
It's amazing.
Spanning all grade levels, all the way from kindergarten to grade, that's pretty impressive.
Uh, I also just wanted to, to just have a quick, make a quick comment about, um, not meeting in July, which we're given, uh, as an F Y I down here. I know last summer, we didn't schedule a July meeting, and then we ended up meeting twice in July, and neither of those meetings were on the date that we would normally have our meeting. So, um, and, and there were both dates that I couldn't make consequently, because they were just times that were inconvenient. So I'd like to suggest that, knowing how things work, um, especially where we are in the bidding process, that we not cancel the meeting tonight, but plan on having it, keeping that date open, unless people already made plans that I don't know about. I was also thinking back just to earlier this year, Ed, when we didn't have a meeting scheduled, and there was some discussion, why did we not have that meeting?
That's right.
Uh, and maybe the board had discussed this, I'm not sure who made this decision, but my feeling, my personal feeling is that the board ought to collectively decide whether we're gonna meet or not, and not have it be, you know, just announced.
Okay. So...
It's fairly routine, the boards don't meet in July, but you can make your own decision.
But our, our, I, having been through several Julias, I know that we always meet in July, someday.
Sometime.
So, so you're, you're saying tentatively, you want it to be the second, you want to set aside the second Wednesday?
Yeah, I would just say, if we're, you know, unless there's a good reason not to, um, keep that date, and then as we get closer, if in fact, there is no business to be conducted, then...
We, we can cancel.
Cancel it, yeah. Yeah, no, I don't think we, and none of us want to come and sit around and, and leave for no good reason, but...
That's, that's right.
Yeah.
So basically, you're saying, we'll schedule a meeting for the second Wednesday in July, and cancel it if, ten is, to go ahead and cancel, it's, it's okay to cancel it?
Yeah, I mean, I would think that it's okay to go ahead and cancel any meeting if there's no business to conduct anytime during the year, as long as the, as long as everybody on the board is comfortable with that.
Everybody on the board, yes, I think, I agree with you, we should check with, check with everybody around, and if somebody's got something that they really want to say, that they should...
Yeah, I mean, we ended up, I think we ended up meeting last year on the Tuesday before our Wednesday, or possibly on the Thursday, the day after the Wednesday, because by that point, Wednesday wasn't convenient for enough people, so...
Should it be noted that all the prep work that goes into these meetings with reports from finance reports, and Mary setting up the agendas and all those sorts of things, in this instance, wouldn't need to be done?
You still have to do most of it because of public notice.
You still, you still gotta have an agenda.
The agenda, anyway.
Yeah. But there's nothing for the...
Well, if there's nothing for the agenda, then you wouldn't need it.
Yeah, well, just make sure it doesn't get into the paper, then nobody knows that it was canceled, that's all. That's one thing that I've seen in the past, but anyway.
So this is my, this is just my opinion and perspective, and maybe other people, uh, you know, have a different perspective, so, just putting it out there.
I, I won't be able to attend that week, just saying that, but it may be something you don't need me necessarily, if it's...
Why don't we, why don't we just leave it, if, if there's something that is really pressing, we'll, we can call a meeting, other than that, let it go.
That's fine, yeah, good.
But if we can, we'll shoot for that.
For that Wednesday.
For that Wednesday.
Good. Tentatively, try to keep that date open.
Just keep that date open if you can, right, and if you can't, well, that's the way it goes.
Yeah, good.
Okay, so we'll leave it, we'll leave it open, we won't schedule it right now, but we will, you, we'll have it open if we need it.
Sounds good.
Okay. Who wants to make the next motion?
So moved to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion?